It may not be seven days a week, but I think that we can do it for a good part of the important part, you know. Weekends, weekends especially are very, you know, Thursday to Sunday in the square is different than Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. It's very. And the enforcement aspect of it, I do still want to come back to you. I want to wait until the square is closer to its fruition, but I do think that from an enforcement perspective, both, not just the revenue, but for parking turnover, that we begin with the pay stations in those two new lots in the square and any parking that may go into, if should any parking ever go into either Milton Village or Central or Business District that is the property of the town. That we should, everyone's done, I mean, the town of Brooklyn just did their whole town. Dedham's done their whole town. We should, we should definitely start to work at making that investment and doing that. And that's just a small baby step to start. And I think if we started at its inception, it'd be embraced a lot better.
The parking meters, you said?
Not meters, they're pay stations.
Pay stations.
Pay stations.
Yeah. So you have a number on the, on the...
You can all, you can do it by your cellphone. It's just...
I think it's a good system in Dedham.
It's a good system.
It is.
It's very good, and I think that that can help with that. And going back to what you said, having an officer who's there that they know that name of faces all the time, who, you know, can go in and say, hey, look, you know, here's what we have to do today, here's a, being more of their partner in it than just the radio car showing up.
Right.
I agree with that.
You know, and I've said it before, even if we, if we took all of that increased revenue and just put it back into improvements in the, in the three commercial districts.
I agree.
It would go a long way.
Hey, any other questions or comments for the chief on the budget? Anything else you want to add, chief?
No, I thank you. And, and I just want to say, you know, I, I thank you, all of you on the boards that have been here before for their support, but I, I do want to say this, and this has been a very tumultuous week for law enforcement in this country. And I went to a mass at St. Pius the 10th at four o'clock on Sunday, a church I've never been inside my entire life, was just a fook, I'm sorry. Your neighborhood's not in the high float. I just, I just went there. And as I was sitting in the church, a priest who I did not know, and I know him only by name, as he went into his homily, he said, the first word out of his mouth was Ferguson, Missouri. And for a second, just as a policeman, following this and listening to it and understanding just how difficult things can be, and I thought to myself, wow, where's he going? You could hear like a hush run like right through the church. And he talked a great deal about his own upbringing, growing up during busing, like, you know, I went to school here, but I had many friends from South Boston and now to pay in a Duxford who were bussed, and I understood what it was like, and Anne Marie knows what it was like growing up in Duxford. Those were different times, we were a different city back then. And he talked about how being part of the solution, not being part of the problem. And he talked a great deal more about it than that, but then this afternoon I received a phone call from an attorney, a female attorney in town, who's known by everyone in this room, very politically involved, and she wanted to talk to me about it, and she asked me a little bit about some of the training and some of the things that we do here, and I said, don't think as police chief that, especially, because we have a very diverse community. We live in a very diverse community, and as for all the good things, we're not immune to violent crime. It could happen, just as it could happen anywhere else. But I've always said since the first day that I came in here to be interviewed to be chief, to the night that I was appointed chief, from a philosophical approach, I believe very strongly that we should communicate our issues versus litigate them. And we will be much better as a police department, being a part of this community versus apart from this community. And I think that for all the things that have happened here, all the things that the boards and the committees have, and the law committees and each member of the board, as I said on this room, have supported not just for me as chief, but for the chiefs before me, the citizens of this town receive the benefit of that. Because we truly have a police department that is truly engaged with the community. And it's not to say that something bad might not happen tomorrow, but I leave you with this cozy analogy that I took from the pilot Sully, who flew the plane into the Hudson. And when he talked about it, he talked about his whole piloting career. And he said that every day he went to training, every day he went to work, every time he embraced being a commercial airline pilot in the United States, he viewed everything that improved his ability as a savings account, and that he'd make a deposit every single time into that savings account. And one day, something might, bad might really happen, and he would make that one massive withdrawal to hopefully preserve his life, which is what he did the day the engines failed on that plane, and he landed into the Hudson without a single loss of life. So I can't guarantee you that, but I can guarantee you this, that even today, officers have been out the range, going through all types of drills and exercises, it's a biannual thing, it's not a, it was very cold last week when they were out there. And you can tell how the instructors, how much emphasis they place on the use of force in an American society, the equipment and the weapons that we use, but as important as escalation and de-escalation, things of that nature. But we are very fortunate in that we have men and women who every day make huge decisions in this community, probably bigger decisions than anybody else, because they affect human life, and I think all of us are the benefit. And you, as the appointing authority for the police department, are the ones who start that ball wrong. You know, the ball ends and stops with you. So I thank all of you for that, and have a good holiday season. Thank you.
So you're going to stay around for one?
Oh, I understand. I don't know anything about that budget.
But let's at least get a motion on the police budget. I don't think we've made that yet.
Move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, FY16 Police Department Budget, in the amount of $6,957,511 Level Service, $6,828,165, which is Level Dollar.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Meme is a pretty small budget. I don't know if we really need you to stay here for that, but I heard that you might be here to answer any questions, so. Does anyone have any comments or questions on the, for the benefit of the people watching Meme, RISD, Milton Emergency Management Association, it's the Auxiliary Fire and the Auxiliary Police.
Who do, you know, a credible job, you know, you have to give credit to anyone who go out and volunteer their time. And even though I, the Auxiliary Police comes under me, I always, I can't go without singling out the members of the Auxiliary Fire as well, because they support us in so many, not just civic events, but major crime scenes, things, fatal accidents, they come out on the worst of the worst for us, and we're very grateful to all that they do for us each year.
And if you look at the budget, Mark Williams is listed as having, he's the Meme Director, but he's been a volunteer since 1974.
That's true.
So that's, that's a lot he has of volunteer service for the town.
To be honest with, between the two of them, both John Farming and Mark Williams, you'll be hard pressed to find, you know, community act with that type of, I mean, they're, John Farming, he's in his 70s. I didn't even realize he was that old. I mean, he's, he's been doing this for his whole, two of them, Mark Williams was doing it when I was in high school. So it's...
Yeah, Mark and John are dedicated community volunteers, that's for sure. So we have a request for Level Dollar and Level Service for them, which is the same amount of each, because this is, it's $10,615. This is a very small budget that pays for some expenses for the volunteer firefighters and volunteer police.
Yeah, I'll move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY16 Meme Budget, in the amount of $10,615.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we skipped over a couple of budgets, let's just, Conservation Commission, 20...
I'll move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY16 Conservation Commission Budget, in the amount of $3,000. Level Service, $2,500 Level Dollar.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a little question, just hang on one second. Yeah, nothing really matters. That's fine, I get no questions.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, we have the law budget.
Move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY16 Law Budget, in the amount of $289,000, which is Level Service, $261,000, which is Level Dollar.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just need an explanation on the difference between Level Dollar and Level Service in a law budget.
The increase in the Level Services for the Professional and Special Services, what I did was I took a five-year average of what we've spent, and that's the $225,000 that I put in the Level Service Budget. And then the Level Dollar Budget, I just carried what we got the year before, which is $197,000.
So I can get a word of that? Say that again.
It's, it's an anomaly, because really, there is no such thing as Level Service and Level Dollar in a contractual budget.
It's a contractual budget.
You pay the bill when it comes in.
Yeah. So what, and usually if we're underfunded, we go to the Reserve Fund at the end of the fiscal year, because it's a, it's a budget that, that's fluid, you don't know what you're going to spend each year. So what I did for the Level Service Budget is I took the last five years appropriations, and I averaged it out, and it was $225,000. So that's what I put in for the Level Service number. And then the Level Dollar number, I just put in what was appropriated for fiscal '15. But Tom's absolutely correct, it's, it's a contractual obligation budget, but historically...
Historically, the Warren Committee has, historically, the Warren Committee, and we came to an agreement a number of years ago, to use a rolling average, and, and then somehow with the Level Dollar Budget, it's gotten forgotten about, but it's, it's going to come out one place or another, you know, it's...
I understand, but has there been transfers over the last number of years?
Yes.
Yes.
With the law budget?
Mm-hmm. In June, you always do transfers.
Do they ever come in under what's appropriated?
No. No. No, fiscal year '14, we did a $22,000 Reserve Fund transfer.
So they put this budget together, right?
Anne Marie's...
You put the budget together.
No, I put this budget, I put this budget together.
Are they aware of what this budget is? The company that represents the town?
Yes.
The retainer.
They get a copy of this budget, once you approve and sign it this evening, a copy of this budget goes to Murphy, Heston, and Lehman.
So you've got little control over lawsuits and...
You just don't.
No, I understood, yeah, yeah. There's a lot of lawsuits going on at the moment.
But they did hold for fiscal year '16, they did hold their pricing, they didn't increase anything.
Yeah, they're not seeking an increase in the hourly rates, but the retainer has also stayed the same.
Stayed the same.
I think it's important for the public to know, though, that it does cost a lot of money legally to represent this town.
Absolutely.
You know, between lawsuits that people don't even know about, and one lawsuit can cost you a couple of hundred grand.
In legal fee, sure, yeah.
Well, on the back, a couple pages actually have the budget history going back to 1997, so it's varied quite a bit, obviously, it just depends on what's going on in a given year.
And you get a breakdown every time an invoice is sent in?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, do we already do it?
You do.
We do, yeah.
Was it seconded?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? And if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, we have General Insurance.
General Insurance is another contractual obligation budget, and this is for your workers' comp, your multi-peril, your liability insurances for your elected officials, your law enforcement, your school board, and for the fire and police injured on duty.
Question, on the multi-peril policy, the actual came in at $273,000 in FY14. Do we, do we know where it's going to come in, or do we have a feeling of where it's going to come in at '15, and why are we budgeting $340,000? So we're significantly up from the actual of FY14. What's changed?
Because we, we have to budget for what is anticipated to be the cost, however, we...
Those the credits?
The credits that I do for the loss control credit program, that doesn't come in till the next fiscal year for the previous year's program.
Okay.
So I have to budget that way.
Okay. But we honestly think there's going to be a $40,000 increase in the multi-peril, and we haven't added any new buildings.
But that's also accidents.
Sure, it's liability, yes.
And it goes on your prior three-year history, and we had one good year that dropped off, and we picked up a year that we had some, some increases.
Okay. All right. And, and that's, that's a number that comes from cooking company in terms of the estimate?
The, the police and fire?
No, no, I'm talking about the multi-peril.
No, that's MIA, Massachusetts Intellocal Insurance Association.
Okay, but how do we get, how do we get the $340,000?
Massachusetts Intellocal Insurance.
So MIA is actually saying, you should budget this?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY16 General Insurance Budget in the amount of $1,9,932.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I did have one other question, I just noticed it. The other line, what happened in FY14?
We had some heavy deductibles for some police matters, we had some SOAR backups that we have to pay $2,500.
No, it's, I mean, $250,000 compared to $60,000. I mean, what? Something spiked it, I mean hugely spiked it in FY14.
Oh, no, that $250 is, is an encumbered amount. We encumber that each year, in case any of the lawsuits that are filed are not covered by MIA.
Okay.
And we have one outstanding now that's not covered by MIA, so we always, historically, have carried over $250 each year in order to pay those.
Okay. So, so the $250 was incumbent in '14, just hasn't been used, so it just keeps getting carried forward?
Correct. It just keeps getting carried forward.
Okay.
Again, in case we have any lawsuits.
So presumably that $250 was used prior to '14 to have it built back up, or?
No, it's always been there each year, and it's sometimes it will weigh up and weigh down.
Well, no, obviously, it was added in '14. It had to have been, because it's budget, it's appropriated in '14.
It was encumbered from '13 into '14, and then it was encumbered from '14 into '15. It's an encumbered amount.
Right, but why am I seeing a spike in '14? It goes from, the original budget was 60, budget adjustment was 250 to make it 310.
Are you looking at Schedule E, because that's all blacked out of it?
Yeah.
You have it in Excel, I have the PDF, so I, can you tell us what the numbers are? I think Dennis and I just have the PDFs. What were the numbers?
All right, there. So, and, it was originally budgeted in FY14 at 60. It was a budget adjustment of $250,000.
Was the encumbered, from fiscal year '13.
Right, to get to 310.
And expanded was 74. So three, 235. Was the balance left?
Yeah.
That with some other money was, that brought up to 250 again, and it was encumbered into '15.
Okay. But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, in order to get this 250 incumbent amount, if it's something we've always been doing and hadn't ever used, then why do we need to encumber it in '14? What?
Well, we do use it periodically, but I always keep it, have always kept it at the 250. That's been historic, and it's been because of the savings in MIA participation credits, dividend credits, the loss control credit program. It always keeps it at the 250 that continues to revolve forward each year.
Right, but we actually appropriated 250 in '14, which...
So you're asking, why is that number 60 rather than 60 plus 250?
Well, I'm asking, if, if the 250's always been there and just keeps getting rolled, then why did, why did 250 come in in '14 if it was already there?
It didn't come in, it's encumbered, it didn't come in. What you appropriated in '14 was $950,647 in the budget. The 250 is just encumbered from the prior year.
Okay, and that's just because it's showing up as a budget, so...
It just shows as a budget adjustment, because of the way we did the budgets this year. Historically, you've never seen that 250 carried forward unless you went to page two, where it says encumbered 250. That's where you would see it each year.
So is this just a new column that the Warren Committee added?
Yes, it's the new way we set up the budgets. You would have never, you have never seen that, Tom, on the front page. But you didn't appropriate an additional 250, it's just an encumbered amount that's carried forward each year in the event of lawsuits that are uncovered by...
I understand what the encumbered is, yes. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay, so we've already voted that, so we're on to Selectmen's E and R. Amount of $55,100.
And it's less than, and again, this is another contractual budget, and it's less than fiscal '15, because we don't have a fall election. We had a state primary, September state primary, in this fiscal year, we don't have that in '16. We just have the October Fall Town Meeting, the March Presidential Primary, and the Annual Town Meeting.
Right.
Now, I remember we talked, was it about a year ago, about possibly rolling this into the town clerk's budget? Is this the line item?
Mm-hmm. We did. And then it was decided that she broke out her budget to show what was truly election and registration costs, and town, separate was town clerk to run her town clerk department. And that's how we ended up doing it last year.
So in the future, is this something we would want to move into the town clerk's budget rather than the Selectmen's budget?
It makes more sense to be there, but...
I couldn't remember where we left it. I think there was a discussion with the Warren Committee, wasn't there? Didn't they have a preference? I don't recall what it was, but I thought there was some discussion about this last year. Well, in any event, regardless of where it is, the number is based on the elections.
Right.
Move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY Selectmen's E and R Budget in the amount of $55,100.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we also have Veteran Services, that's our last budget for tonight.
There was that one request of the cemetery to move flags into their budget from this budget, has that been done?
Not that I know of, no.
You're talking about what Bob Mason referenced at the Veterans Day Parade?
Oh, I didn't know.
I don't know if anyone mentioned that, too. I know I didn't.
I did.
Forgot about it.
You didn't mention it.
I mentioned it to somebody.
I remember, are the flags in this budget? Bob Mason is a cemetery trustee, and he did ask at the Veterans Day Parade that possibly the flags could be moved into the cemetery budget.
It's always a battle to get the money for them. They're always late, and they're always...
So can I understand it correctly, that they have an appropriation in the cemetery budget for flags, and you want me to take that amount?
No, they do not right now, but they would rather have it in their budget so that they can...
Yeah, I don't see it in this Veterans budget.
No, if I get buried.
Is this where it was?
Suppose...
General expenses? Let's check general expenses. I don't know if the cemetery submitted an official request, they probably didn't, but to us, I mean, not to...
Unless it's in that miscellaneous amount.
It's probably in the miscellaneous line. I'll follow up with the cemetery superintendent tomorrow.
I forgot about that until you just mentioned it, Tom. So we have a request for the same amount, Level Service, Level Dollar, $182,158.
And again, as you know, we get 75% reimbursement for the Veterans' benefits.
Okay, I'll move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee. The Warren Committee can always make the change, I suppose, if we...
Second.
I don't think we've made the motion yet, but to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY16 Veteran Service Budget, the amount of $182,158 Level Service, $182,158 Level Dollar.
Second motion.
Any discussion?
Other than just, I guess, inform the Warren Committee that, you know, it may be changing slightly.
I follow up with the superintendent.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. So we still have the Selectmen's budget to submit at our, that'll be at our next meeting?
That's correct.
Are there any others that are outstanding, or we now covered all of the ones that are under our jurisdiction?
You have the DPW.
DPW, right.
You have the Central Business Office, you have Selectmen.
Those three? Will all of them be...
And group insurance.
Okay, will all of them be on for the next meeting?
We didn't see CBO when Amy was...
We did, but it had to be deferred for some, at the prior meeting, for some follow-up.
Okay.
Okay, so CBO, DPW, and our budget.
And group insurance.
And group insurance. So will we have all of them on?
On your December 8th, yes.
Yeah, which we've now moved to December 11th.
Which now moved to December 11th.
Okay. All right, then we are on now to the bid acceptance for the annual town reports and warrants. We had a, we have a motion to approve a bid.
Motion to accept a three-year bid from J and R Graphics, the printing and binding of the annual town reports and town warrants.
I will second.
And according to the information we had from Mrs. Rizzi, but that was our only bidder.
Yes.
And we've worked with them for a lot of years, so, they do a good job. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to number nine, which is the 2015 Common Vittler's License Renewals.
Make a motion to approve the following 2014 Common Vittler's License Renewals.
And I guess that should say 2015.
2015. Radio Coffee House, 24 Central Ave., Milton Youth Hockey, Yulin Rink, Newcombe Farms, 1130 Randolph Ave., Lethy LLC, New England, doing business as Bruegger's Bagel Bakery, 360 Granite Ave., Abdelgani Sanusi, doing business as Zack's Pizza and Wings, 538B Adam Street, Hojarn Inc., doing business as Mr. Chan's, 534 Adam Street, Janus Place Two, doing business as JCI, Houghton's Pond Concession, Tino's Pizza, 2 Central Avenue, Stella's Luncheonette, 558 Adam Street, Starbucks Coffee, 552 Adam Street, Milt Dunn LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, 545 Adam Street, B and D Ichiro Inc., doing business as Ichiro Sushi, 538A Adam Street, Spellbound Inc., doing business as Milton House of Pizza, 537, how do you pronounce that?
Twigo.
Twigo Management LLC, doing business as GH Bent &amp; Company, 7 Pleasant Street, Welch Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, 550 Adam Street, Milton Fuller Housing Corp., doing business as Fuller Village, 1372 Brush Hill Road, Milton Fuller Housing Corp., DBA Fuller Village, 1399 Blue Hill Avenue, De Plate, 27 Central Avenue, Milton's Opus LLC, DBA Steel &amp; Rye Restaurant, 95 Elliott Street.
Second, but I do have a couple of questions. Why, Milton Youth Hockey is not running the concession standing longer, so why are we issuing them a Common Vittler's License?
That should not be there. It's an error.
And the second one is, in terms of the plate, are those licenses issued by address because they have a new location in...
They won't have.
Won't be open till next year.
They will. They might have to apply for the new location.
Okay. They're not open yet?
Nope.
Okay.
So should we offer a friendly amendment to delete Milton Youth Hockey at Yulin Rink? You'll accept the friendly amendment?
I'll accept that.
Okay. And, just for the benefit of the people who are, might be watching, what is the fee on these licenses, and what are the requirements to get the license renewed every year?
The fee is $75. It was increased in around 2005, it used to be $25. And the, we have an application that the business owner will come in and fill out, and then we work with the town treasurer and the Board of Health to make sure that their taxes are paid, and their food licenses are all up to date.
Okay, great. Okay. And if no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. And I'm assuming the liquor licenses are coming up soon?
On the 8th.
On the 11th.
On the 11th. It's the 8th in my head.
Okay, we have some executive session meeting minutes to release. Is this the correct motion?
Yes.
Okay. Where's that?
Number two.
I'll move to release to the public the following executive session meeting minutes, 2012, August 23rd, 2012. Items One and Two withheld, 2013, January 10th, 24th, Item Two withheld, February 7th, Item Two and Three withheld, February 28th, Item One withheld, March 1st, Item One and Two withheld, March 7th, Item One withheld, March 21st, Item Two and Three withheld, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're slowly making our way through those. We'll have more in the next couple of meetings to go through and release. Okay, Boards and Committee Appointments.
I'll move to approve the reappointments of the following members of the Conservation Commission, Judith Darrell Kemp and Michael Blute, to serve through May 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank them for their service.
They do a good job.
Okay, we have a motion to approve income from the Mary L. Peabody Fund for Christmas Gifts.
Okay, I'll move to approve a grant in the amount of $200 from the Mary L. Peabody Fund for the purchase of Christmas gifts for needy Milton residents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Next item is the Quincy Home Consortium Mutual Cooperation Agreement. And we have a recommendation from the Planning Director that we extend this agreement.
I'll move to approve participation in the Quincy Home Consortium Mutual Cooperation Agreement with Quincy, Holbrook, Braintree, and Waymouth, through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?